Okay, it's six o'clock, so I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Uh, Mr. Orbin, good devotion.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful to be able to gather for this city council meeting and pray for Thy Spirit to be with us as we discuss the needs of our city. Help us to be able to discuss those things that are important, to be able to share our thoughts freely. We are grateful for our community, for the citizens, and pray for Thy blessings and abundance to be upon them. Please guide and direct us in accomplishing the work that we need to do here this evening, we pray, in the name of Thy Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Would we do the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Mr. Kelly, do the roll call, please.
Brown.
Here.
Borders.
Here.
Staples.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Calvert.
Here.
Let the record reflect everybody's presence.
Lee.
And me. Uh, next item on the, is to adopt an agenda and, uh, we're gonna have to do a amendment and drop resolution off. We voted on it, resolution for the paving last, last month, and it shouldn't be on here. So if I can get a, I think that's the only changes need be made.
Make a motion to approve the agenda with the additional of dropping resolution, of paving resolution off the agenda.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Brown, seconded by Vice Mayor Jones. Any discussion on it? Hearing none, all signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by like sign. If record reflected, passed unanimously for adopting of the agenda. August 2025 financial report, I hope everybody had a chance to look at that, and I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion to approve the August 2025 financial report?
Second motion?
Let the record show that Vice Mayor Jones made the motion to approve the financial report, seconded by Councilman Staples. Is there any discussion on it? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by like sign. Record showed passed unanimously. Now on to the, uh, September 18th, 2025 minutes, I'll entertain a motion there.
I make a motion to accept the minutes from, uh, September 18th meeting?
Second.
Let the record show that Councilman Staples made the motion to approve the minutes, seconded by Vice Mayor Jones. Is there any discussion?
I'm just gonna abstain since I wasn't here. I don't wanna validate something I didn't hear, so.
And you have that right.
Yep.
And I only see one thing that needs to be added to the minutes where the paving bid's got Austin P. Highway, Plidwick Road, but don't have Johns Avenue. So get that motion made to approve with the addition of Johns Avenue. Is that okay to y'all? Okay. Any more discussion about it? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by like sign?
Abstain.
One abstained, four. Passed four to zero. One abstained, show that on record. Come on in, Mr. Bradley.
Can you tell me who made the motion?
Where is everybody?
Mr. Staples made the motion, Alex seconded, Cameron abstained. Next is public comments, see that nobody's here to make public comments, so Kelly, let the record reflect that nobody was here and add that to the minutes. And we'll make a couple announcements right here. Uh, I guess y'all know that Chief, Chief Gatwood's not here. He called me today, his wife's back, has gone out, and he had to go, go and help her this evening, so that's, that's why he's not here. And, Mr. Bradley, this is gonna be a meeting like we had last time, well, asked for suspended rules because we didn't have a work study.
Okay.
And suspended for purpose of discussion and voting possible.
Okay.
Next is, is, uh, old business, there's none. And next thing is going on into new business, and this is where I'm gonna entertain a motion to suspend the rules for the purpose of discussion and possibly voting.
So moved.
Let the record reflect, Vice Mayor Jones made the motion.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Councilman Staples. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by like sign. Let's show passed unanimously. And the, uh, first reading of ordinance 0102025-1, ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of Westmoreland, Tennessee to add residential and industrial zoning districts under the architectural compatibility standards. Alex, could you explain?
Bear with me just a second so I can pull up the, now this is different from that. This is from the planning and zoning.
I will say these ordinance all come from the planning and zoning for, for us to, to approve them, or they give their approval through us, or their recommendation.
What is the ordinance number on this first, uh, 0 dash 1?
Yes.
Trying to find the one that went along with it. I think this is the one that it is.
You want a hard copy?
If you've got one, one of.
Yeah.
What, uh, it's not this next page right here underneath it, is it? There was one, I thought there was something that Brian Helmer had sent.
And then the next one, by order.
Brian, get send it.
Cause there were a multitude of them, and I wanna make sure I'm talking about the right one.
That's what we're talking about now. Which, what she gave you is identical to what I sent.
Okay. So if I'm not mistaken, this is the one where it requires a, uh, at least 60% of, of exterior facings on a building to be masonry facade, whether that be something along the likes of brick, stone, or like hardy siding.
I think that's gonna be the next one. No, it's, it's this part.
No, I think it's this one.
Yeah.
Am I on the right one?
Yeah, you're on the right.
You're right one.
You're basically reading A right now under K.
And, uh, it is basically, uh, including that, making that a requirement through all districts, I think. Is that, that's how, I think that's how I understood it. So no matter if it's agricultural or 1, 2, 3, industrial or commercial, all districts would be the same requirements of 60% masonry facade, masonry sided.
And then this is the first reading, and this thing's getting done pretty quick. I'm gonna entertain a motion on the first reading here.
Motion to approve, uh, first reading of ordinance 010205-1.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Calvert, seconded by Vice Mayor Jones. Is there any discussion on this ordinance, on first reading?
I just wanted to point out, at least in this document, it's showing that C was struck out, and I'm assuming we are not using that as.
No, they already, they already have that for commercial.
Okay, gotcha. So, well, what struck out is that it's an exemption, so is that, is there already an exemption there? Or, oh, or no, they changed it from, from exemptions to multifamily dwellings, I see what they did.
Yeah.
They changed what the, what it was.
They taken out the exemption.
And changed it to multifamily dwelling.
Right.
Okay, I follow now, sorry.
All right, any more discussion?
So can you explain to me what this actually means as far as, so any, anybody builds anything, it's got to be 60%?
Correct, yes.
Whether it be a home?
Uh, warehouse, a commercial building, a McDonald's, um.
Residential home?
A residential home, anything.
60% mason?
Mason, masonry sided, so it could be a sided house, but it would have to be some, a product like hardy siding instead of vinyl siding.
How does that affect when, cause I, my understanding is the current regulations, when a single wide is removed, a double wide is the only way to replace that single wide. How does that gonna tie into that? What happens then? That 60%, it has to be 60% masonry? Cause, is there an amendment for those modular homes or for mobile homes?
Mm-hmm.
Uh.
Latest I can have a, a foundation under.
You can put the skirting material around the outside, cause anything along the lines of like a product like Airstone, which is a, a light fabricated stone veneer product, uh, can be used on the exterior surface of the building as long as it meets that 60% requirement.
But can you, that's what I've wondered, can you get 60% on a foundation?
If you've only got a two-foot foundation or an eight-foot wall, you ain't.
How you get 60%?
You ain't 60%.
If you're pulling something off and pulling something back on, then you could go before the Board of Zoning Appeals and seek a variance.
But you see what I'm saying? I mean, it, just like if I, if I have a piece of property out here and I wanna put a double wide on it, double wides are not 60% stone, and even if you put a foundation of stone, you still, brick, block, what have you, you still not gonna get 60%, so that will kindly rule out the fact that you can't put a mobile home in, right?
You can build a home.
But you, you understand what I'm saying? I know, I know what you're saying, yes, anybody can just build a home, but I'm just saying that rules out that you can't bring a mobile home in, a, a, say a double wide, a modular home that's vinyl sided.
I would guess, I would guess you can order it from Fleetwood with hardy backer.
With hardy side, that's an option, or you could hardy side it?
But even if you build a home, you, that, that eliminates, and, and I'm just using it as a reference, just like, uh, Carter Street, I think that's what it is, no. The new Tin House subdivision, that construction's built, those houses are vinyl siding. They've got the stone foundation, but they're all vinyl siding.
Well, even the new houses down here, they're not 60%.
Well, the front on those, I don't know if they would get 60% if the house is being built at the mall, because the foundations are usually about yay howl.
Those are slab houses.
They're what?
Those are slab houses for the most part, I think.
Well, but that found, the foundation, the exterior is what you're talking about, you're not talking about the.
Well, and really and truly, your, your cost difference between a vinyl siding and a, and a hardy siding is marginal at best.
But, but what I'm saying is you're, you're limiting and you're forcing people to have to spend even more if they can only afford a vinyl siding house with a block foundation, and I'm just suggesting, now you're causing to have to spend more because you're the requirements.
But you get cost savings on the back end with your homeowner's insurance over the long term of your house, because a masonry sided home is, so lesser homeowner's insurance cost.
But you see what I'm saying?
I would, uh.
You're forcing, you're forcing.
I would recommend that we go ahead and, y'all go ahead and pass it on the first reading, and let's get with, let us get with the planner, and, uh.
Might come up as an exemption or something before second reading, if, if you wanna do it that way.
Have you guys ever, we talked, ever discussed in zoning and planning about eliminating, uh, modular homes from being rebuilt in areas where there's already a single, single wide, or, has there ever been discussed? I know that's a, that's a question, I don't know if it has.
I think it was discussed when we were talking about the zoning ordinances, um, I can't remember, it's been, it's been a minute since we, we talked about all that, I don't remember exactly what the discussion was.
It's just a curious question, I'm just wondering if that's, and I wonder if you build a, if you had a home and you, would this include a large concrete porch? If you had to add a porch to it, could that be considered part of that 60%? Again, that's just another question.
I think if you take the whole exterior of the building, square footage, and that's what you have to calculate off of, there's however many square feet of that exposed surface is block or brick or stone or masonry siding.
And, and who determines the 60%?
Building inspector.
Building inspector, but.
More or less, more or less it works out to.
Built down there on.
More or less it works out to three sides.
From the old grade school, and that, that wouldn't, that wouldn't meet this code because it's all vinyl sided.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
Don't act good on the back.
That, that's my point, I mean, I, I understand on commercial.
Yeah, the idea of being two sides is like 50%.
I think it could change the land, I mean, if you took these actual, if you took that actual recommendation, it could change the landscape here if it was actually enforced.
It could elevate the standard of homes that are built here.
It would elevate the standard of homes, no doubt, but it, on the cost side, it would definitely concern others who couldn't afford it. If, if it's still a lot to put a si, double wide back in place of a single wide, that's.
Well, I think county standard says you can't, you can't put a single wide up anywhere in the county, I don't believe.
If you pull a single wide off, I know you have to bring a double wide back on.
Yeah, you have to bring a double wide in.
Isn't that a state?
I've not heard that, but one thing about it is if you've got legal mobile homes now, they can still be maintained if you pass this. It doesn't do anything, they're all.
They're the grandfather now.
They're all grandfathers, it's just about new construction that you're talking about.
That's what I'm, that's what I was referencing, yeah.
And, you know, and there's some real limitations on what you can even do to regulate mobile homes, cause they've got a very powerful lobby in Nashville, and there's state statutes that protect manufactured home, pre-manufactured homes, so I think you need to look at that very closely before second reading to make sure you're not running a file of that requirement.
That, that I didn't know, that's good to know right there.
Well, and, and you, you may want to exempt them, I mean, because there are already some limitations on what we allow with mobile homes, I assume, and, and to try to limit to just the ones that are already here and not create new zones for mobile homes, but, it's, you can't discriminate against a mobile home in a lot of ways, and so, this, this would, this would already discriminate because you're requiring of everybody, but if it's practically impossible to do it, you could get challenged by the mobile home industry. Okay. I guess we need to talk to your planner, you need to talk to the planner about that particular thing, pre-manufactured homes, in context of this, and what, what we can do to make an exemption or exception, or maybe an amortization that for the next 10 years you can do it, and after 10 years there'll be no more, or something like that. There's several ways to do it, but we don't wanna, we don't, we don't wanna invite litigation.
But, well, I mean, that's what I'm, that'd be another thing is, you know, well, you can, you can let somebody bring the mobile home in like that, but I can't build my house that way?
Yeah.
So how is that?
There's some really important issues here, I'm telling you, you need to, you need to have your, might wanna have your planner here and explain it, whoever's idea it was.
Yeah, I don't know whose it was, uh.
Is it Kevin that's doing this?
Brian.
Oh, G R C.
He comes from Greenland.
Oh, Greenland wrote this?
About, about the, uh, about the, uh, yeah.
I think with new construction, there's no question, you know, I think that's okay. It's just, you weren't, but the modular homes are kind of a different animal, and they might have to be treated different. I haven't looked at it, I haven't seen it, so I don't really know, I'm just hearing what you're saying about it.
I think Greenly had brought it in there about the ACS. That's how this got started. Then that's when Brian started looking, looking over that particular ordinance and found these other items.
And I do know, I do know he did pull from multiple other municipalities in order to make the recommendations to change it to the, to this.
I think these issues need to be looked at before second reading, if you go ahead and pass it on first reading, with the understanding that you're gonna revisit these questions you've raised on second reading, and, you know, you may amend it, you may never pass it on second reading, it's, it's up to you whether you wanna pass it on first reading.
And according to this too, of course, F says the property owner may request an approval of alternate plan, which is not in compliance, but basically it satisfies the intent of the requirements rather than strictly the requirements, I don't know what that looks like.
Well, like I said, you can still go before, uh, the Board of Zoning Appeals and request a variance, just as you would right now with any alternate plan that's not, non-conforming to the code.
But wouldn't that, if you allowed one, wouldn't that kinda open the doors to have to allow everybody?
If they, if they submitted, if they submitted a variance request and went and asked and requested the variance, then the next person would have to come before and, and meet the same expectations and same requirements of being granted a variance, yeah. If you, if you did it for one, you'd have to do the same steps, make them go through the same steps to get the.
What kind of a timeframe does that add to your building project?
Relatively none.
It's the expense.
And like I said, if you're doing a hardy side versus vinyl side.
I mean, I mean, I wanna build a home, but now I wanna put in for a variance, how long from the time I apply for that variance till I get a yay or a nay? How long's that hold up my building permit project?
Well, the next line, uh, next.
We're gonna deal with that.
Item here sets a timeline of 60 days, you have to have some sort of action taken with it in 60 days, otherwise you get automatically granted your variance request.
And, and that's in quarters to TCA.
That just, that puts us in line with what the state requires.
I'm, I'm just saying that that, that now adds, you know, if a guy's got a construction loan, that's two months that's added to his construction loan before he can ever put a shovel in the dirt.
All right, hearing no more discussion, I'm gonna ask Ms. Kelly to call for the vote.
Borders.
Just for the sake of more discussion, I'll vote yes.
Staples.
I'll vote yes for the same reason.
Jones.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Record recorded, passed unanimously on the first reading. Next is first reading of ordinance 0102025-2, ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of Westmoreland, Tennessee to adjust the rezoning timeline requirement to reflect the current TCA language. And that.
That's that 60 day.
That's that 60 day, we got 30 days on ours, but, uh, we're just gonna get, uh, 60 days so we'll be in line with T, with the state.
60 business days or 60 calendar days?
Just 60 days, calendar days.
60 calendar days, okay.
Well, what this does is if you submit your plans and they don't act on it within 60 days, it's deemed approved and you move on.
Oh, okay.
It's to benefit builders, quite frankly. So if, if a city doesn't move quickly enough, they've got their approval automatically.
So what was the, so we're actually sooner though right now, we're, we're at 30? Or this, this language was changed just to make it 60?
Currently we're at 30, and we're shifting it back, um, to 60 so that we align with what the state requires.
You can do less, you can't do more, but you can do less.
Let me entertain a motion for this.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading ordinance 01022025-2.
Let the record show that Councilman Brown made the motion on the first reading.
No, second.
And seconded by Councilman Calvert. Now is any more discussion?
Yeah, I guess my, my question then was, was there a reason, other than the state's 60, what was the rationale between us changing from 30 to 60? Is there a concern that it won't be met in 30 days?
My understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding was that because we have less staff to be able to review documents, it gives us a little bit more time if something is to slip through the cracks, or if we get to planning and zoning and we need more time to think about something, or talk about something, or request something of the applicant, this gives us a tool, because there's lots of times where something's added to the agenda on planning and zoning, we'll all be here to meet on it, and there's no one here to speak on it. So it could be an incomplete submittal, it could be something where we've made a request of the applicant, and now they need to resubmit or add additional materials to us so that we've got everything we need to meet the requirements of the request, um, but it just, it gives us a little more leg to stand on whenever we ask for something extra, or there's not someone here, and if we defer that action, or we don't take action on it tonight, it's on the agenda, instead of it being automatically approved, it gives us more time to be able to request, um, someone to give us explanation.
Just like we had that situation.
Uh, two months ago.
Two months ago, and, uh, because he didn't submit the, the correct documents, we didn't have time to, uh, to deny it in planning and zoning, we had to send it on to us, or if not, he, he would automatically got that rezoned.
Because it has to be approved or denied in the commission meeting, not by.
Within 30 days.
Within 30 days, yes.
So how, how often do y'all meet right now?
Every month.
Just once a month? I'm just trying to wrap my head around.
Gives you a better timeline anyway.
Yeah.
I think it's a good idea.
It makes sense to be consistent in the state law, that's what other cities have done, it's what developers expect, you know, so I think it makes sense.
And it doesn't mean that it'll take 60 days, it just makes that.
It just gives the city a little extra time if the city needs it, rather than automatically someone getting a rezon.
Okay.
Question's been called, so Ms. Kelly, will you call, uh, call for the vote, please?
Staples.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Borders.
Yes.
Let the record reflect, it passed unanimously on the first reading. All right, the next ordinance is, uh, first reading of ordinance 0102025-3, ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of Westmoreland, Tennessee to adjust permitted and conditional usage in the R2 zoning district. And Alex, you wanna take that one over too?
Yeah, this one's where it was kinda confusing, you could have a multi-flam, multi-family dwelling in R2, but you could not have a duplex in R2. The question came up as to what's the difference? So in order to keep, uh, duplexes from being able to be put up where, right next to where other single-family homes are, in the neighborhood of single-family homes, uh, that's existing zoned R2, was just to eliminate multifamily dwellings, uh, from the R2 zoning district, and, uh, make it where R3, the most dense zoning district, is where all of your duplexes, multifamily dwellings, townhomes, things of those nature would reside.
In what again, say that again?
In R3, so it basically just.
R3?
Eliminates multifamily, the wording of multifamily dwellings, uh, or attached residential dwellings, uh, from R2, and the only zone that you can build those in would be R3.
Duplexes, say, will you say them again?
Duplexes, multifamily dwellings, townhomes, apartments, would all be in R3.
Okay.
This excludes you from building a mother-in-law's apartment on your house.
That's the attached residential dwelling, I'm assuming.
If it is a.
Yes.
Primary dwelling, it would, yeah. Primary dwelling, it would, yeah.
So if it's, if, if it's an extra room, it's one thing, but if it's a whole nother living space just attached to your house, then.
No, you can still, same as before, go before, as you can get a variance.
All right, I'll entertain a motion on this first reading.
Make a motion to approve ordinance oh one zero two zero two five dash three.
Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Jones. I'll give a second. Second by Councilman Staples. Is there any more discussion about it? Hearing none, Ms. Kelly, call for the vote.
Jones.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Borders.
Yes.
Yes.
As the record reflected, passed unanimously. Okay, next one is the first reading of ordinance zero one zero two two five dash four, budget amendments for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget.
And I want to note that it's actually a resolution.
That's right. We changed that to a resolution, so let me go back and give us that resolution.
It's R one zero.
R one zero.
Two zero two five.
Okay.
Dash one.
Dash one. Resolution on the budget amendment.
The only read.
Yes, the only read. And we'll hand this off to you, Ms. Meredith.
All right, nothing has changed with the numbers. It was just the way that it was reported. It's where I put the numbers on the ordinance, on the spreadsheet for the state. There were deficits in general fund, solid waste, water and sewer. They were showing deficits. There were not deficits on our end. It was just where I placed them on the worksheet, on the spreadsheet. But everything is the same and they're requiring us to do a budget amendment for it because I've moved those numbers. They haven't moved those numbers. One of them was debt service. I did not know that you weren't supposed to include the principal, all new interest in the debt service, so that was one of them. That was an example of one of them.
I have to ask a question, Ms. Mary.
Yes.
How do we can amend an ordinance by resolution?
That, it was an ordinance. Uh, we're not amending anything here.
Okay, you're not amending the budget ordinance? Okay. I thought it was a budget amendment.
Well, it is a budget.
Amending the budget but not the ordinance.
But I got, yeah, and Charlie with Controller's office, he's the one that sent it to me. He said, you can only do one. He said, you, you can do it as a resolution. That's what he told me.
Well, yeah, I don't know if he's a lawyer or not, but you can't amend an ordinance by resolution. I just think that to be safe, we just got to go ahead and do it, pass it, and pass again in November and be done with it. I know the auditors will not have a problem with that.
Right.
The resolution, I, I, I think he spoke when he shouldn't have just.
All right, let's go back to the audit, the ordinance number.
It's the way it is in your budget packet, in your, in your agenda packet anyway, because it's ordinance.
Okay.
The original order, yeah. Well, I've got to change that number. So yeah, just, it's what it says on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and.
And it's fine.
It won't hurt to pass it one time to satisfy me. Right. Thank you. You got it.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve ordinance oh one zero two zero two five dash four.
Let's second that motion.
As the record shows, Vice Mayor Jones made the motion to pass the ordinance, second by Councilman Staples on the budget amendment. Is there any more discussion on it? Hearing none, Ms. Kelly, call for the vote, please.
Calvert.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Borders.
Yes.
Staples.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
As the record reflected, it passed unanimously. Now, there's departments, I guess y'all got all the reports, uh, from the department heads. Meredith is the only one here, but she was probably. Okay. Public Works, uh, I think that paving is getting ready to start happening sometime toward the end of the, uh, month. Fire. The fire, the full-time firefighter is working out great. Uh, response time there is very good.
Under Public Works. Uh, can I bring up something that Aaron wanted me to?
Yeah.
Address tonight? So we've got the improvement project going on, um, George Akins Road. Uh, it's, uh, Bishop Trout Road.
George Akins and, uh, Bishop Trout, no, not Bishop Trout, Bishop Trout's, and it's like Lake Road.
Right, that's what they've just completed, right?
Yeah, they've completed that.
Uh, next step would be Bishop Trout and, uh, then Dewey Carr Road.
Dewey Carr.
Aaron brought up, uh, Aaron called me this last week and, uh, said that there are several people who have, who are in front of these new lines that we've put in that, uh, when we began this project or discussion of this project, uh, when the ARPA funds became available or were becoming available. Were interested in tapping on to those new lines, uh, because they had wells. Those wells had a tendency to go dry, especially in dry periods like we're in. And he bought, brought up, uh, an issue, uh, that they say it's too expensive to tap onto the lines due to our capacity fees and our water taps. Neighbors just crossed, just across the county line are able to, they're having similar work done in Macon County uh, with their water system and those neighbors across the county line are able to tap on at no charge. So a question for you.
Move to Macon County.
Would be, uh, is there a possibility since at the time that this project began, we didn't have that in place, is there an option to allow us not to require those capacity fees for, with this new line that we're putting in?
What would be the basis of exempting them? That's the thing about these fees. You know, if you start exempting them, you know, there's no need to have them. So I mean, that's, y'all talked an awful lot about these fees and here we are again. We just, we just passed that, I think. But you can make as many exemptions as you want, but every time you do, you, you open yourself up to being discriminatory because you're, when you change something, you're treating someone else differently. I don't know what's a specific thing. Is it some specific situation where someone needs to tap, they can look at it, but.
Well, we, uh, we didn't get this grant for new, new customer. We got it to tie them lines together.
It was, yeah, it was pre-existing customers and to look, because you were losing so much water and, and you wanted, you were concerned about your water loss as well as your capacity. Now Portland's a lot more of a capacity issue with Portland. They need, they need the water. You can always revisit those capacity fees. I mean, y'all the ones that set them. It's up to you.
Okay.
To amend it if that's what you want to do.
Aren't those capacity fees for new construction? Or is it for?
For everything tapped.
For every tap that's added on.
Yeah, the language doesn't, um, specify.
New construction.
Because that's part of what we, we've discussed about.
Well, there's nothing on earth you can do about it tonight. If you want us to look at it, we'll look at it. Somebody show me what you're talking about. I'll see if we can make some exemptions. You know, you may, you may want to just have a separate rule for people that in the past, you know, that are existing houses that decide, you're talking about existing houses all the time.
Yeah, existing houses that have a well, that have never had a water line in front of their house before. We decided to put in a water line uh, for our own benefit of not, not losing water.
If you do something like that, if you give them special treatment, I would suggest you do it for a very short period of time. They got six months to come in and tone. If they don't, they're going to be paying the same capacity fee everybody else does. If you, if you decide that it makes sense to give them some special treatment. And I don't know if it does or doesn't because, like I say, it's not before us tonight.
Yeah, let's bring this back up, work study.
You really need to. It's not something you can just add on to the end of the meeting like this.
All right, I just thought I'd bring it up since we're having a work study tonight here for the month of October.
All right.
That'd be something for the next work study, it looks like.
Yeah.
Yeah. I did want to point out that he put on here that water loss was twenty-seven percent. That's a.
That's as low as it's been in a long time.
Yeah, it is. That's why I was sitting here looking at it, saying, man.
They've been fixing some leaks. When we, we got them people coming up here to find the leaks, they've been fixing some leaks that we couldn't find.
Um, I just want to note that, uh, Public Works is going to have Austin P from Thede Lane to Carter Street closed tomorrow to any through traffic while they get, I think it's a tile, getting it ready for the paving that's going on. I put it on Facebook, but if you have anybody asking about work closures, that's what's going on.
And Mayor's updates, I think, uh, I guess I've told y'all about Hardy's and, and the new parts house.
I don't know none of that. So you can tell me.
Well, Hardy's is pulling permits.
McDonald's.
McDonald's, Hardy's, McDonald's.
I was about to say, yeah, I was.
Hardy's is here. No, McDonald's.
They're doing that good.
They're, they're pulling permits, uh, going in behind the Dollar Store and going to be facing Sonic.
Dollar Store. Which one? The over Dollar Tree or?
Dollar General.
Dollar General.
Whole Dollar General, oh, up there on top.
They'll be facing the fifty-two side.
Okay.
And the new parts house.
O'Reilly's.
O'Reilly's. It's going behind Dollar, Dollar General, who's going to be facing thirty-one.
Behind the Dollar General?
Mm-hmm.
On top of the rock?
I think that's correct.
Yep.
Rock and it might not be, and they get rid of it.
Yeah, they got, they got ways to get rid of that rock.
Is it, is it going to have a play place though? That's a real question. The McDonald's. Yeah, the O'Reilly's too.
My granddaughter, she, she texts me about two or three times a week, a week now, said, when's it going to be built? When's it going to be built? Is it built yet?
That's funny.
All right, last item, I guess, is the adjournment. I'll entertain a motion for that. Motion's been made to adjourn and it's not up for discussion. All in favor, signify to stand high. Let's go home.